Um, so we have a four, so we're down to four right now. So we have a quorum of the three of us, I believe. Um, so we'll go ahead and uh call the meeting to order. The first item we have is approval of the minutes from. Is that May eighteenth? There's one revision. Was it the twentieth?
Well, it says twentieth of the. Agenda, but it's eighteen of the actually. Well, it would have been the twentieth. The twentieth is one day.
Yep. Okay, so um approval of the minutes for May twentieth. Twenty twenty four. Are there any? Questions or comments from commissioners?
No, make a motion to approve of that.
Okay, do we take public comment on it? I think we did for all items, right?
Oh.
So any, any comments?
Well.
Okay. So, sounds like uh we have a motion. In a second? All right, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, so that passes. All right, item number two, the public is invited to present petitions, make announcements, or provide other information to the planning commission that is relevant to the scope of authority of the city of Blue Lake that is not on the agenda. The planning commission may provide up to fifteen minutes for this public input session. To assure that each individual presentation is heard, the planning commission may uniformly impose time limitations of three minutes to each individual presentation. The public will be given the opportunity to address items that are on the agenda at the time the planning commission takes up each specific agenda item. Do you have any public comment that is not on the agenda? Go ahead, Mr. Swatsky?
Uh Kent Swatsky, I'm the only person from the public room, but I do not need fifteen minutes. Just you don't have to listen to me go on and on. Um. I have major property home holdings in the lake, as many people know. I also have my primary residence in Blue Lake, which I'm not living at currently. On my P O box and everything else associated with Blake. But because of where I functionally actually live, I'm not qualified to be on your commission. I'm in within your sphere of influence, but I'm not within the city limits. Uh, I was kind of distressed at the other planning, at the other city council meeting. Where one of, I don't know if it's one of you here was, was appointed to the, to the uh planning commission. There was testimony that didn't live in Blue Lake anymore and uh had rented out their house and resided somewhere else. Uh, at Humboldt State, working with their wife or something. And I, I, I just like to see the rules followed, so uh as long as we have people that uh follow the rules and think I'm happy. Um, I also wanted to make a comment on some things that will be upcoming in the future. Possibly you will be asked for a rezoning of some property, which uh the city may intend to try to take by eminent domain on the air and matter property. Um, that's going to be contested. Of course, that would have to be brought into the city and zone for a one acre thing. Uh, you may find that come before you. I probably won't come before you because of what's going on going there. I also did wish to make comment regarding uh the housing element and measure O, and I've consistently brought to you. And I appreciate the fact that uh that Gary Reese is bringing forward an update for the general plan. Try and make some things consistent with the general plan. In the, in the, in the ozone, you made a determination. Some, some people there made a determination it was consistent. Couldn't be consistent with something that's not consistent for foundation. So I still wanted to bring that forward to you. I strongly support some of the things within the ozone. And, and I don't, I don't set the timer there. Can you face that to me? So anyway, I strongly support uh things within the ozone. It was, it was workforce housing, basically, or you live and work where you're at. That's what it was designed for, in my opinion, and I strongly support that. I strongly support uh tiny homes, accessory dwelling. But when you have a zoning that's specifically for workforce housing, and it seems to be being misappropriated. For low income housing, that, that was not the intent that I read into the ozone. So if that was your intent when you passed that to enable that whole area, you could turn it to strictly non-workforce housing. Or like, if you have a, a project brought before you, let's just say ninety percent of it should be that where someone lives, works. No reading for three stories, two stories is great. And that's a perfect working site for people. That's a, a, a European model, which works fantastic. You're, you're rolling out of bed and going to work. Nothing can be better than that. But anyway, those are some things that will be brought for you in the future, and I guess you'll be having a housing element eventually coming before you. Strongly support you looking at that, that people. Keep up to your speed.
All right, thank you. It looks like we have a hand up. I think I can read that. I think it's uh Julie Christie. Go ahead, Julie.
Julie Christie, um, how's the audio for the commission tonight for Zoom? Can hear me okay?
Yeah.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. It's nice to check. Um. I would like to go back to the minutes. Um, maybe the commissioners are comfortable disclosing who was writing those minutes. Um, I did throw my hand up. However, AI I know we've got a new chair. Um. There are some verbiage stuff in there that I thought was really. I, I feel uncomfortable how public comment was scripted, not amongst myself, but many other individuals. Justin has the recordings. I think whoever's doing minutes should really prioritize on going back through Justin's recordings. And thank you, Justin, very much for being there. We appreciate you very much and having Zoom commission. Please always support that. Um, I want to go back on what Kent, Kent, thank you for being there too. You said you're the only public. Um, back to the ozone, um, I just want to throw out to our commissioners to take advantage of excess humble. Eureka has been going through designating their um corporation yard as surplus land. They waited till they had over fifty percent of their invest inventory stock out before declaring that. And now they're going to go through a process of ninety days where they have to promote that property out to other um government entities come first and other individuals. I think we need to look back on how we did that with uh um our neighbors down there. I don't believe we're really following that through in the guidelines that are potentially laid out. As well as back to our housing element, we're the only city in the county that hasn't had ours accepted yet. And I'm not going to use the excuse it's been NIMBYs or public. I'm going to use the fact that it is not consistent with our general plan. And I really hope that this commission takes that under consideration in further decision making. Thank you.
Did you have anything, Becky? You're muted, so I will take that as a no. Um, were you guys able to get everything that Julie said? I was, I was about fifty percent. It's just hard. It's always hard for me to understand. Yeah. Okay. Alright, so no more public input? Right, so moving on to item three, approval of the agenda. Any questions or discussion items for commissioners?
Do we need to declare that we have an eight o'clock stop time? So we're not going to rearrange anything, but we have to start from eight p.m. Due to issues with the quorum? Stay that officially, but.
I think we can just move through it and.
Okay.
And I, I believe we can just move through it until we land where we land and just not start something if we're.
Great.
Close to the cutoff time. Does that sound good? Okay. Um, any um? Any comments from, any public comments on the um agenda? Okay.
Oh.
Uh, go ahead, Julie.
I'm sorry if my audio is bad. Thank you for being patient with me. The stop time on the agenda was actually nine. I don't think we're going to take that long this evening. However. The ordinance perhaps, would it be more politically correct or correct to move that forward before we talk about the permit? Um, for the, how the roofing, not sure how um that flows, but just a thought and suggestion.
I didn't get that.
Doing the ordinance prior to the permit um application.
I'd recommend you guys stick with the order so that these applicants can.
Yeah, I think we should just stick with the applications and get through that. Great. Um, I don't see any reason to move the public hearing before the applicants.
All right, great. Then I'd like to make a motion.
Okay.
Further discussion.
Yep, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So approval of the agenda passes. All right, item four uh is an action item, application number zero two five dash one three one dash zero zero six slash two zero two four. Exception to the residential development standards in municipal code section one seven. Decimal two four, decimal two six zero A five for Edward Rasmussen to allow a metal roof on a single family residence at three hundred Charton Road. A P N number zero two five dash one three one dash zero zero six. And I believe we have a staff report that goes with that?
Yeah. And uh this is my colleague, Leanna Frater Tim, and she's going to be presenting on items four and five tonight. And I'll be presenting on items six and seven.
Hi, Commissioner. Oh, can you hear me? Hi, commissioners. Thank you for having me today. Um, I'll be presenting on agenda item number four. To begin, um, the exception to residential development standards for Edward Rasmussen. Uh, Edward has applied for an exception to the residential development standards in Blue Lake Municipal Code. To allow a metal roof on a single family residence at three hundred Charton Road. The exception was requested because metal is not a, not listed as an allowed roofing material in section seventeen period twenty four period two six A five. The proposed metal roofing is described by the applicant as a sixteen inch ribbed T lock metal panels. Made from twenty six inch gauge, or twenty six gauge steel and coated, primed and painted gray. Below is a sample of the proposed roofing material that was submitted to the building department by the applicant. The planning commission is empowered to allow an exemption from the standards upon showing of a good cause. A principal criteria for determining whether good cause exists for the exemption or substitution shall be compatible with the neighborhood in which the structure is proposed to be constructed or placed. The applicant has provided justification for the exception, which includes the following. The metal roof is proposed by the applicant because metal is a longer lasting roofing material, has improved drainage characteristics. And is similar to several other metal roofs installed on single family residents in the city in recent years. Additionally, the applicant's property is currently developed with a metal shop and located approximately one hundred and thirty feet southwest of another property developed with a metal shop. Based on the staff report. Staff recommends the planning commission approve the staff report concerning the request for exceptions to the residential development standards. That concludes my report. We can open the item for public comment and take public testimony.
All right, thank you. So we obviously don't have the applicant here, so we can just move straight to the um public testimony. Any um public testimony on item four? Go ahead, Mr. Swatsky?
I'm personally divesting a lot of my assets from uh here to Mexico where they're, they're way ahead of us in construction. It's about everything we're building down there is non-combustible. It's out of concrete and block. With the fire danger we have and where we're living right now and the fear of what could potentially happen, I strongly support any uh. You could just about see in the future them outlawing wooden structures entirely, which would be really sad. I mean, they'd be grandfathered in. But anybody who wants to use a metal roof, it doesn't matter the design. It doesn't have to be fancy. Uh, some people don't have a lot of money. And I strongly support any kind of metal roofing, any kind of metal siding, anything that gives that person fire resistance. If you're, if you're building here and your two neighbors have metal roofs and metal siding, your house is my, much less likely to burn if there is a fire that's sweep to the city. So I think that's the up and coming thing is to have totally, total fire resistant construction down in Mexico. They used to have the older houses have metal roof with wooden uh rafters underneath them. Those are now totally gone. They have other, other structure which is strictly concrete. And I think it's, it's something that we really need to look forward to and, and encourage within the city of Blue Lake. As far as, as far as anything we can do that's non-combustible. I think it's, uh, fire is our biggest concern here. We saw what happened during our little extra up here. If that, if that fire had gotten away three years ago, whenever it was, or this one got away, it'd take that whole hillside out in a heartbeat. We just happen to be very lucky to pre-burn and we also had. We had cal fire here in, in major force. So anyway, that, that's my thought on this. And so anything regarding this or anything else to have metal roofs allowed. And again, doesn't have to be the most expensive one, because you don't want to have the people who can't afford to have a nice one, really nice fancy one. Be precluded from having that safety. I think about you speaker. This kind of did on the next one. I don't think I need to say it again, so we'll save my time. Just go ahead and say did on the next one also. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other uh public comment or testimony? All right, I don't see anything. So um comments from commissioners, questions? I think we've been through this one. I don't know. It's at least my fourth or fifth time. We probably haven't seen it yet recently.
No, I haven't, but you know.
Great. Nope, I have no comments. I'm ready to make a motion.
Okay, so do I hear a motion on item? For application zero two five dash one three one dash zero zero six slash two zero two four. Exception to the residential building standards, municipal code one seven dot two four dot two six zero A five.
I make a motion to approve the exception request for.
All right, we got a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Passes unanimously? All right, item five, very similar to item four. Application number zero two five dash zero six five dash one zero slash two zero two four. Exception to the residential development standards in municipal code section one seven dot two four dot two six zero A five. For Ryan McClutcheon to allow a metal roof on a single family residence at two four one F Street. A P N zero two five dash zero six five dash zero one zero. And I know that staff has a staff report. Do we need to go through it considering it's exactly the same as the last one?
Take the person that's proposing. I think that's appropriate because they are different.
Okay. We'll go ahead and take the staff report then?
Hello, commissioners again. My name's Liana and I'll be presenting on agenda item number five. Ryan McClutcheon has applied for an exception to the residential development standards to allow a metal roof on a single family residence at two four one F Street. The exception was requested because metal is not allowed roofing material. Uh, the planning commission is empowered to allow an exemption from the standard upon showing of good cause. A criteria for determining whether good cause exists for the exemption or substitute shall be compatibility with the neighborhood. In which the structure proposed for construct, to be constructed or placed. Uh, the applicant has provided a justification for the exception, which includes the following. The metal roof is proposed by the applicant because metal is a longer lasting roofing material, has improved drainage characteristics, is fire resistant, and is similar to several other metal roofs. Installed on single family residences in the city in recent years. Uh, you can see the uh design and material sheet on attachment one and what they're proposing. Based on the following information provided in the staff report. Uh, staff recommend approval for the request for exception to the residential development standards. That concludes my report and the, the item is open for public comment and take public testimony.
All right, do we have any public comment or public testimony? All right, doesn't look like we have any public comment or testimony, questions, or comments from staff? Oh, go ahead, Julie.
I'm, I'm sorry, you guys. I'm cleaning piggy stalls and doing chores. I really love Zoom. Um, the last time we discussed the metal roofing was back in December, I believe, and I think there was another applicant on Ice Street. I'm, I'm just hoping that as we move forward as planning commission, we were told at council. The reason there were no planning commissions is you had no decision actions. And I feel like these people have all been waiting to get their roofs approved. We're already not doing the ordinance. That was why we didn't do this prior. Because they were told we needed to change the ordinance and now we're going to pre-approve them with an exemption. Um, I just hope that this doesn't deter community members. Um, the process has been very interesting. And that we're paying to S H N employees to be present at our meeting tonight. So be conscious, my commissioners, please.
Thank you. Any other public comment? I was going to back up for commissioners, questions, comments? All right, so do we have um? A motion to approve item five, application zero two five dash zero six five dash zero one slash two zero two four. Exception to the residential development standards in you, in municipal, municipal code. One seven decimal two four, decimal two six A five for Ryan McClutcheon to allow metal roofs. All right, do I have a second?
Yep, one second approval.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, passes. All right, so our next item six is a public hearing with potential action. Amendment to municipal code section one seven decimal two four decimal two six zero development standards. To allow metal as a roofing material on single family residences subject to specific design criteria. The proposed design criteria states that the metal roofing material must be standing seam, concealed fastener. And have colors and or textures that reduce glare and reflection. This code amendment would allow metal roofing materials that meet the specified design criteria to be allowed without requiring an exception from the planning commission. Pursuant to municipal code section one seven decimal two four, decimal two six zero B. The recommended environmental determination for the proposed code amendment is the common sense exemption pursuant to California Environmental Quality Act Guidelines. Section one five zero six one B three. Which applies where it can be seen with certainty that there is no possibility. That the activity in question may have a significant effect on the environment. And I believe we have another staff report for this one.
Yeah. Hi, Gary Reese, uh, city planner. So as folks have noted, and as it states in the staff reports, uh, there was direction received from the planning commission in December of twenty twenty three. There've been a number of, of roofs that have come forward. And they were all of types that we should have no problems approving. So that's kind of the way it's been going for a few years. Uh, so that's why the side is on the agenda tonight. And obviously, we were motivated by the recent applications that came in as well, trying to move the side forward. Um, so. You know, just a little background. Uh, I think historically, and I've worked with Blue Lake on and off since uh early two thousands. And I think historically, folks didn't like metal roofs because the type of those people have put on structures in the community. They were corrugated, kind of tin roof type look, and I think past councils and permissions, you know, didn't particularly like the aesthetic of that look. But over the years, and you know, the, the design, the colors and materials have really changed and they're a lot nicer now, these, these modern metal roofs. So I really think that's alleviated some of the prior concerns and it changed the mindset towards uh, you know, metal is a roofing material. So that's one of the main impetus for this being on the, the agenda tonight, as well as obviously the direction for the commission. So we've come up with some draft language uh to put in the development standard section of the zoning code. And this pertains to home standards for single family residences only. And I think these, just to give a little history, were developed, um, applying to not only family residences, but manufactured homes. So that everything looked like a stick built structure. And that's really what these were meant for. Uh, I think in the eighties, when they developed some of these rules, they had concerns about manufactured homes going into neighborhoods that had a lot of distorted homes. And affected the store character of those neighborhoods. So they came up with these standards and they left metal off as a roofing material. So here we are now. And the language that we're recommending essentially says, and this would just be added with section on roofing materials allowed. Uh, it would say metal roofing that is standing seam, concealed fastener, and has colors and or textures that reduce glare and reflection. So a lot of the ones we have seen, I would say almost all, I'm not familiar with one that's corrugated that's been proposed. Um, since I've worked on these types of exceptions, they've almost all been standing seam. It's very popular. And typically concealed fastener, you know, standing seams, seams are, you know, vertical basically, and the concealed fasteners, you can't see the skirts uh with looking at the roof. Um, as far as glare reflection, certain colors and textures of, of these metal roofs materials can have pretty bad glare. And so, you know, you could probably do research online and just see that there's a lot of products out there that are um intended to reduce glare. Uh, by color as well as texture of a metal roofing material. So uh, that was kind of the intent there with saying it has colors and or textures of reduced glare reflection. Uh, so that's the language that's proposed. Uh, as you're probably aware with this proposed code amendment, people wouldn't implement this criteria, would not have to come back to these exceptions. Uh, so attachment one to the staff report is a, a resolution. Which contains the findings, if the planning commission so wishes to recommend this to city council. Uh, contains the findings that you would want to make uh for this recommendation. Including uh the sequel determination that was read by the vice chair. Uh, as well as just noting that uh the amendment would be consistent with applicable general specific plans. Uh, and referring to government codes section pertaining to recommendations to the city council. Uh, we would also uh be providing uh the December eighteen twenty twenty three minutes where the commission gave direction to staff. Uh, to bring aside it forward and then also the minutes from tonight's meeting where uh we're holding public hearing and the recommendation is being made. So uh, other than that, I just would note, if you look at exhibit A to the resolution, uh, there are a few little typo errors as well. Uh, there's just a couple of words that were left out, such as under subsection A one, it said has minimum width of twenty feet. And then under uh subsection B, uh, there was a word left out, said application for substitution or exemption from. And then just said development standards. Uh, we wrote these development standards. So besides the additional language to allow metal roofs meeting uh certain design criteria, we also made those minor edits as well. And staff is recommending that the planning commission adopt the resolution and make this recommendation to the city council. So other than that, uh, that concludes my staff reports. I would suggest that we open up hearing up to take testimony.
All right, do we have anyone from the public that would like to uh make any comments or have any questions? Mr. Swatsky?
Well, I obviously feel this is the, the future of uh environmentally friendly roofing, the uh composition roof. You get three roofs and they have to strip that down. You have to dispose of that. You have to recycle that. Uh, the lifetime of these metal roofs can be significantly longer. Uh, and I have, I just have to say that the last thing that the activity in question have is, may not have a significant effect. I think it has a very positive significant effect on environment, so I'd like to just state that. It, it's, and there was something about twenty feet. I don't know whether twenty feet or twenty. Well, my, my biggest thing is I think this has to do with residential. And my biggest thing that I'm in favor of are the, the, the ADUs of the tiny homes. And, and I, I, I guess someone could come in here. I, I have roofs and I, I have not done the standing seam because they're not highly artist, artist, you know, they're, they're not designed for that kind of purpose. And the cost was, I think, probably thirty or forty percent more for them. I'd hate to see people who can't afford that kind of roof precluded. So I, I guess they could come before you if they wanted to have something that wasn't stand. if they wanted to have something that wasn't standing seam hidden thing and get permission to that. We, we really don't want, you know, it to look like, I guess, the rust color that you'd have on the city courtyard down there, where you have the old roofing and stuff like that. Uh, I have roofing that I've used, non-standing seams that I put on thirty years ago on a barn and it's still sitting there perfectly, uh, highly reflective. I can understand not wanting highly reflective, I guess that's an interesting term. But when, when you do, uh, as far as energy efficiency, the, the more reflective and the wider your roof is, the less your energy you use for your house, I mean, the heat's dissipated and it goes off, reflects that, so as long as they can come through before you guys and get acceptance of that, I have no problem, you having this kind of high-line, high-style roof. And I, I do look forward to, I don't know if this applies, applies to ADU with a tiny home, so hopefully you may have certain exemptions from that in the future. And what I feel our future develops is the infill with tiny homes. And at that time, I guess you would have made, make the thing, but you can always make the acceptance sound like you're coming before you guys. I'm hoping a lot of people come before you, with exceptions for this, for the tiny homes and things like that, whatever we can do to facilitate that, I think it's gonna be our future, they have to speak.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Go ahead, Julie.
I'm gonna try again. I concur with Kent, I feel the specific restrictions is something that is going to lead in to more applicants needing exemptions potentially, I think the commission should think about broadening that in a way that you review them in a broader spec per case. Um, going into our industrial area, what if people want irrigated roofing down there? Is that not going to be included in this ordinance change since it's specific to residential? Um, if we're trying to do it now, perhaps we could add industrial, commercial, and residential, and so we're not having to have more exemptions if it's necessary. We have two planners in the room, so I'm sure they can clarify that.
Thank you, any other public comment? Alright, open it up to commissioners for questions or comments.
I just want to thank you for bringing this back. Definitely an item that I've been wanting to see for a long time, so I was glad to see it on the agenda, so we don't have to keep having applicants come for exemptions for things that are uh, becoming just really common and kind of a, a no-brainer, so I'm happy to see our policies be updated, um, to reflect that. Um, I am curious, you know, the, in the development standards here, um, they are sort of more general in terms of the type of material, except when we get to the metal roofing where we have, you know, the standing seam, the concealed fastener and colors, textures, and sort of some more, um, criteria there versus the other categories that we have that are just very general in terms of wood, asbestos, cement, and just naming the material, and so, um, I'm curious if this, uh, new definition of metal roofing that is including those, uh, more detailed criteria is gonna be limiting in any way, especially given the fact that, you know, this hasn't been updated in, I don't know, twenty years or something, and so are we putting ourselves in a position where the technology will change and maybe standing seam isn't the thing in a few years, um, and we're gonna have to come back and, and do another modification or, or continue to take more, uh, applications for exceptions. So just curious about the, sort of the wording there and the technology and where we see the, the metal roofing industry going. There's a way to capture that and when that art future work.
What's the question?
It's question?
Okay. Um, I, I think what we were trying to do with this is be consistent with the most common metal roofing type, just how forward here is, this is almost always what it's been. Even really seem to like standing seam, concealed fastener. Um, and but also still kind of be consistent with some of the reasons that this rule exists, which was the core here, that was a concern. Um, so I would just add, uh, again, that this is only a quick decision. So this would not place limitations on commercial, multi-family, industrial, that's why you may see buildings like that with them. Okay.
Uh, I have some same thoughts, um. I just want to point out that, uh, you know, metal roofing also has its own issues, uh, fade, it's, it's very noisy, so we breathe on either side of somebody, especially especially in the area that has much rain. That's what I do love though, and I've worked on it a lot, I think the sealed faster, but the concealed faster is halfway, it's gonna seem to stay for a while. Um, I am curious about reducing glare and reflection, are we, is that like, uh, we're talking like the color of the roof? Like, sure, so if someone wanted to get down the roof, like, uh, flex, like, then, then, you see what I'm saying, like?
That's not really a common color, color palette of metal roofs, but yeah.
Like, when you see roofs undone in commercial settings, it's a whole big white, but that's not seen, whereas?
That's correct, so I'm glad you pointed that out, so oftentimes when they're trying to reflect, you know, the sun's rays are either way, it's done from flat rooftops.
Yep.
You know, they, they kind of have a border around it, you don't see it from the ground. And, uh, I know just from personal experience and talking to others that, you know, certain colors and really slick, uh, you know, metal roof can really glare at certain times of the day, and people complain those and things like that. And some people consider that to be a nuisance, so we were just trying to kind of honor that concern, that, uh, these things can be very reflective. Most of the colors and materials that people have proposed at Blue Lake are not the type that would do that, we're not seeing whites, we're not seeing very light colors. Uh, and so we haven't really seen that as much of a problem, these two folks are looking basically gray. Um, some of the others we've seen are, uh, green, brown, there's things like that, so really, we haven't had that be a concern yet, so we've kind of tried to write rules that are consistent with what people have been doing in this community. Uh, while also kind of honoring, you know, the reasons that those people exist.
So Gary, the term, um, you know, textures that reduce glare and reflection, I mean, that's somewhat, uh, subjective, I think is what you were kind of leaning to there, but that also gives us the option to evaluate any potential colors that folks might find to be an issue, such as white, am I correct on that?
That's the idea.
Right, it, it gives some leeway there to still have some evaluation of the colors.
Yeah, in essence, it would end up going to the planning commission, right, yes, determine whether it can be so.
Okay. And then along with that, since this is, um, for, uh, single-family, specifically for, uh, single-family homes, because I don't have this on the top of my head, can you remind us what the differences are with, um, the industrial um, roofing standards that we have, um, since that was brought up in the public comment, how these, how those two items would play together?
We don't have standards for those roofs.
So anything, so any, so those items, so a metal roof on an industrial building or commercial building would not have to come before the commission, it would just go through the regular, um, approval process for that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, and, and to expand on that a little bit, I mean, the city has developed design guidelines, you know, the mixed-use design guidelines from mixed-use area, you have the downtown design guidelines, you have some store design guidelines. The state has, uh, made us aware that those aren't really like legally enforceable, they're more guidelines, like they sound, but they are referenced in the zoning code, like, you know, if you default the guidelines, if they called that out, they were playing our zoning code as part of the housing home now being said. Um, what does that mean exactly, are you saying that these are enforceable on, say, housing? And so one of the, uh, implementation programs in the housing home, it's actually clarified into advisory. But when you look at those, I mean, yeah, like downtown design guidelines is really trying to make it look like historic Main Street USA, basically, and it's not exactly consistent, hopefully like guys down there. Um, the, the mixed-use design guidelines really just, it has some recommendations, but it really mostly just makes comparisons instead, this is not good, this is good. These kind of thing, looking at examples of good mixed-use or commercial development, they are gated. Uh, but anyway, again, they're advisory, um, these are not, would not be binding on the industrial or commercial uh, well, and this is only for single-family, and again, you can see out here, any single-family home, including a manufactured home. That little part right there, including a manufactured home, that's pretty much what these are about.
Thank you. Any other questions? Alright, so does somebody want to make a motion to take action on item six?
Sure, I'll make a motion to adopt resolution one dash twenty twenty-four, recommending the amendment, um, to the zoning code.
Alright, so we have a motion and a second. Um, all those in favor?
Hi.
Alright. Item six, we're, yep, item six passes.
And then, uh, court, if you did come by, and you're available, city hall to sign resolution, yep, that'd be great. Um, Mandy, what is the next question? Would there be the ability to get this on back?
I can sign it tomorrow.
Okay, that'll be great, yeah, like to swing this forward, we can?
Okay.
So time check, are we, what are we thinking about the next?
Yeah, so we got a little bit less than twenty minutes, um.
And I would note that, uh, no action, obviously, this is just a discussion.
Right, so we can continue.
Just to start the discussion, so I think that would be ample time to just have me explain why this is on here, and maybe if you guys ask a question, the public comment.
Okay. Alright, so item seven, uh, discussion item, amendment to municipal code chapter one five decimal zero eight, sidewalks, curbs, and gutters to allow stormwater low-impact development, LID improvements. As an alternative to the standard design specifications for sidewalk, curb, and gutter, the alternative could be applied in locations where the public works department determines that the standard sidewalk, curb, and gutter would be infeasible or create problems related to drainage, road width, or other factors. And I believe we have a staff report on item seven.
Yeah, so, uh, just to give kind of a little background, uh, in recent years, there's been a number of, we're basically infill projects that have kind of bored where the requirement for curb-gutter sidewalk, uh, was triggered. And this would be like the one vacant lot in the neighborhood got developed and they had to do curb-gutter sidewalk. Or somebody did a small lot split, created a lot, built a home, had to do curb-gutter sidewalk. Or, uh, somebody wanted to do a large addition to an existing residence and triggered it. And what's happened in many of these cases is you're talking about neighborhoods that have a curb-gutter sidewalk. And this ends up being like the only person that's supposed to do it. And the concern is, is that one, you have a sidewalk to nowhere, um, two, there's already existing drainage patterns, right? And you throw one piece of sidewalk in there and that messes up those drainage patterns. You know, storm water comes down, so then it runs along it, it dumps into somebody's yard. Otherwise, it would have just kind of run in the normal drainage pattern along the paved, you know, roadway, that kind of thing. Uh, it can also cause localized flooding around it, it was basically stopped there and flooded that area, but it didn't ever pass. Uh, another consideration that public works and the city engineers brought up is it's not a great idea to have to be ADA requirements for sidewalk to be incrementally trying to do it, it doesn't make sense. Also, there's sites where it really, the standard specs for curb-gutter sidewalk don't make sense just because of grades, because of topography. So there's been a number of these where public works and city engineer have determined, like, this is not an appropriate or feasible location to do our standard specification for curb-gutter sidewalk. Well, what the ordinance says in that case, because they have that ability, the ordinance says you, you can go out there and inspect and say, no, this is not a good location. The ordinance says that results in a deferral of that requirement, so it requires the property owner to put an amount of money up equal to what it would cost to build that curb-gutter sidewalk, it'd be thousands of dollars, if it's a corner lot, it'd be really expensive. So they have to put this money up, sign an agreement with the city, and then within like twenty years, those funds are supposed to be used to develop curb-gutter sidewalk in that location. And it's a little short-sighted in that some of these locations would never be an appropriate location to do standard curb-gutter sidewalk. Um, or, or really any of them, so having people have to put that money up, sit there and kick the can down the road, for, for what purpose? There probably, there may never be a time where it's appropriate to do this. And is it, is the rest of the neighborhood really gonna fill in with sidewalk? I mean, we look at some of these older neighborhoods, you know, that predate these regulations, they may never do anything on their property that ends up requiring this, so point being is that after enough determinations, the city engineer public works started looking for alternatives. So if people have this money up and there's some kind of improvement would be appropriate here, but it's not standard curb-gutter sidewalk, what could it be? And there was one case examined on railroad, uh, Sarah Plinstone's problem, where you had, you have redwood, you have first railroad, and drainage just kind of collects down there, and there's not good drainage inlets. And so you have localized flooding in that area at certain times, and so, uh, the city was really looking for an alternative, what can we do down here? Instead of putting in one piece of curb-gutter sidewalk, what about a drainage group? And so what you have in the staff report, this is a picture of what Sarah ended up doing. And so that was the compromise, she, uh, entered into an agreement with the city and said, okay, I will use these monies I had to put up supposedly for curb-gutter sidewalk to do this improvement instead, which will actually, uh, improve drainage in, in this area of railroad avenue. And you would be putting one small piece of sidewalk that would encourage people to go on, was a, a very narrow roadway with limited rideaway, buildings right up to the edge of the road, it just wasn't a good location to be funneling pedestrian traffic. But it was a good location to put in some kind of stormwater LID improvement. Well, there's many other situations out there like that in the city where it would have been more appropriate to do something like this instead of the standard requirements for curb-gutter sidewalk. So based on that, uh, the city engineer put together this design specification that you see in the staff report. This is a spec for a low-impact development planter, not exactly what Sarah did, because she came up with her own design, but somewhat similar. And, you know, this is just kind of like a unit, uh, design where it could be scaled up or down for whatever the situation is. It could be done, say, in a corner lot in two locations on each frontage if appropriate. And there are other folks right now that are waiting for determinations from the city on what's gonna happen with this requirement for curb-gutter sidewalk, and this design would be appropriate in those locations, at least some of them. Um, so that's, that's really why this is on there, we're, we're looking at recommending potentially to the planning commission a code amendment that allows this as an alternative uh, to just doing a deferral and a city holding on to the money with the idea that you're gonna construct that standard spec at some point for curb-gutter sidewalk. Uh, one thing also to point out is there may be no improvement that's appropriate in some locations, you're up on redwood in certain locations, like you don't want to do a stormwater improvement, you don't want to do curb-gutter sidewalk. Is it appropriate to change the rules that, uh, city staff can determine that, or maybe it comes to the commission, whatever the case may be, that you shouldn't have to meet that requirement at all here, just because it's not feasible. So it's, it's something, you know, we're playing around with, and we want to start the discussion tonight on how we're gonna approach this, because the way it's written, it's really not enforceable in that it's leading to situations that make sense, people's money getting locked up to do something that really probably shouldn't be done in those locations. So this is really to provide more flexibility and the ability to determine either it outright shouldn't happen or some other alternative could that makes sense for the situation.
Thanks, Gary, um, let's go ahead and open it for public testimony and comment, go ahead, Mr. Swatki.
Yeah, Swatki, I've done quite a bit of development in Blue Lake, uh, we're general engineering contractors. Back when, uh, Scotty Hardin was, uh, in head of, uh, Public Works, I don't know if any of you were here when Scotty was there. But, uh, I had building lots and they, they had projected road elevations that the road would be something. And that was eighteen inches below with the existing roadlet, so Scotty and I engaged in what we call cut-to-fit, pay-to-match. I went ahead and I shot my own graves, determined what the flow was, and he said, go for it, and those, those things technically could have been jackhammered out, they were done thirty years ago, they're still there, they'd probably be there for thirty years, because that road's never gonna get that changed. I do support flexibility, I've been known as a contractor who, who, uh, who kind of bucks the whole thing, and I've always felt curb-gutter and sidewalk is a very important thing, and I would always willing to put it in wherever feasible. I think it's a safety issue for the children and everything, it's a barrier, so if you, even if you had latitude where somebody could not feasibly put it on one side of the road, have them put their money in, put it on the other side. Have them put their money in, put it on the other side. So at least there's one good, safe route for children to get to school and people to walk. So I, 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 I think flexibility is great. Strongly support you looking toward that. I I strongly support the person who does have a financial responsibility, spend three thousand dollars or whatever it is he did on curb gutter sidewalk. Should be required to do something of that nature. And then the discretion of the public works and you folks, put it to work in the best way possible. I think that's a win-win for everybody, but main, the main thing is is not to lose the perspective that we do need those safe routes for everybody, uh, for the. Bicycleists and for the pedestrians to get from point A to B. And that can be built into something you bring forward, future stuff. Strongly support moving in that direction. Thank you, Dr. Speaker.
Thank you. Go ahead, Julie.
Thanks again, you guys. Um, I appreciate Kent's comments. I think the new truck route is going to be. A very good reflection on different, um. Different attributes to that planning as we go forward. I would like to suggest that the commissioners. Even though somebody might have to take off and the agenda listed us not closing till nine. We really want to hear the planning report. We don't get a manager's report tonight, but if there's a planning report. You guys should want to hear that too. Look at the delinquency of this commission. And we know projects are moving forward and we should be concerned and wanting to get a report. Nothing was in packet. That we can reflect on, so we have to wait another month. So I know a commissioner is leaving. You do not have a quorum, but it would only be discussion anyway. So I highly advise. The one commissioner excuses themselves and we continue on with this meeting since there are no longer any action items. Thank you.
Thank you, Julie. Any other comments? All right, we can go ahead and open it up for discussion at this point.
Yeah, I um appreciate the flexibility and alternatives, uh, the alternative proposed to the traditional curb gutter and sidewalk. And I definitely um understand that there are situations in which it's not always feasible. So I appreciate having the alternative. Um, and I wonder if we can think even broader about alternatives. Um, the first thing I thought about was. Here on railroad where we have the Annie and Mary trail. And so certainly if there was a development going to happen there, it doesn't make sense for someone to put in sidewalk where they literally have a trail. Right, going across their driveway. Um, and this low impact stormwater um situation might not also, might also not be a feasible. Thing. And so can we look at, you know, they do, they have to spend that amount of money based on the curb better sidewalk. Just and they have to put it into a fund that then the city could use for trail maintenance or for some other identified infrastructure improvement need. Um, so can we look wider at having kind of those development? Go more to other uses that could be um helpful to the city and not just limited to drainage and storm.
Thing that came to mind for me was, yeah, I like the flexibility too. Uh, and I was thinking maybe even. Maybe there's some streets that are more complicated to the curb better sidewalk. Uh, uh, I have a family member who has special needs and. Or that they're able to walk on a sidewalk on a street is like a very important thing. Like, yeah, I suppose that's important. We also eat those cases as well to get important. Smaller, maybe it's more safe for folks like those um to. Move without, enjoy their life and do it safely. So I think if we. Always doing, or just while someone's doing the curb up sidewalk, someone's doing this, you know, we just have this kind of hodgepodge of things. Like assistance that, uh, even though I like the, I I do like flexible, it's maybe more around the neighborhood or if the, if you have the. You know, we get to the main street, you know, I don't know how that gets sorted out. Uh, essentially.
Yeah, so I I agree with both of the comments and I think I'm going to try to put the two of them together just after listening to both of them is I, I think that. Think we all appreciate the flexibility and I think that's important. But what I think I'm hearing and and the way I feel is that there should be a larger assessment of um a pedestrian plan to make sure that. When we implement these um measures, that there's, there's some forethought into. Um, a coherent path for folks that need a sidewalk. To get from point A to point B. It doesn't necessarily have to be on that particular street, but that there is some connectivity. Um, on adjoining streets to other streets. Um, that's just kind of what comes to mind. Um, it makes it a little bit more complicated, but. But I think it's important um to have that um connectivity. I know, you know, in particular, where I live, this is an issue. And it would be hard to solve this issue in in some cases. And so um I think that um. I think there's um some more discussion that's gonna definitely um take place around this. Um, the other question I have is the um, the financial implications and um. The bonds or the cash that's being put into these accounts. So. How does it, how does it work if um? If if a bond or a cash deposit uh has been put into an account and an improvement is never made? What happens to that funding? And would there be a scenario where all of a sudden? It would go, uh, we would go backwards to um a deferral and say, well, now we have this other option. So now we're going to exercise those funds. Does that question make sense or?
Yeah, I mean, let's just look at what the word it says now. Simply says you put out that security instrument, you enter into an agreement. Say there's a template agreement that's attached to the code for these and, you know, it has certain stipulations, you know, the timeline in which the monies would be used and things like that. So. Uh, in essence, like they did with Sarah Plinstone, they enter into a different agreement, saying something else as far as, you know, how the funds could be used, basically. Uh, Mandy, how did you, how did you guys hold on to this?
So those funds would be put into uh a holding account. Um, and I'm assuming normally we have those in non-interest bearing accounts. Um, but it's an uncomfortable situation. I mean, you could literally never have anything that, you know, triggers those funds to be used in the future. Um, you know, we're, we're looking, when you look at our neighborhoods, you're really looking at a lot of, a lot of what we're seeing is infill development. So it's not, we're not building new subdivisions. So we're not building continuity. We're, you know, putting something in a backyard or was, you know, putting an additional unit on an existing lot. So there's not anything necessarily in the future that's going to trigger, um, you know, the use of those funds. And so I think that was somewhat of an uncomfortable situation for, for staff too. And also knowing that we have a lot of issues. Um, with our street system, especially with drainage, that, um, you know, these funds are much better equipped to. Um, you know, make improvements for the neighborhood than they would be to ever put in a sidewalk. Uh, obviously, getting that continuity of pathways and accessibility is really critical. And we have been working on that. We do have a um safe routes to school analysis. We've identified. Um, the safe routes for children to get to school from all different points in Blue Lake. And so that has been done. Um, we have done some analysis of our sidewalk infrastructure and that was a big part of um improving the sidewalk structure for Greenwood. Um, is to put those accessible sidewalks in. So there has been a lot of work being done. Um, you know, we're a little bit limited and hampered just with our, our funding sources, but it's not something insurmountable, you know, even for staff to be able to go out and. And analyze. So there is a lot of um thought being put into that. This is just really more a tool for. Uh, you know, staff and the engineers to look at and say, you know, when there's just like Sarah's is a really perfect example. You know, her LID feature is going to capture a ton of stormwater and we've had a huge problem with flooding um in this area and it's just not. An appropriate space to put in sidewalk curbs and gutters because it literally would flood other property owners, but being able to work with her. To be able to put in essentially was just a, you know, a detention basin um is going to really help overall for not only the surrounding properties, but Sarah's property and the city as well. Um, so it is a really nice tool to be able to have. It's not applicable everywhere, but it's, um, right now we just have a one size fits all. And it doesn't fit even the majority. So um this like, so this is kind of just another tool in that arsenal, not that it would be applied all the time, but as appropriate, it gives staff that flexibility.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, when thinking about the use of the, the doctor standard curb gutter sidewalk, typically want to use those. On their property frontage if possible, or in the immediate area as opposed to it being pooled with other similar bonds and used towards like plant capital improvements. That's a different planning mechanism that the city would have to look into. Uh, where right now it's kind of like you had to put the money up. What other type of improvement can we do in the immediate vicinity, ideally along your property frontage? Uh, that would address the concerns such as drainage.
And I think you need to reasonably tie it back to impacts too. I mean, you can't be like, oh, hey, like we want to build a park. It was one of that playground feature, you know? But you know, there's, that means more people, you know, using that road, you know, walking more traffic, you know? So what are some of those direct impacts that could be, you know, alleviated through some of these improvements? Um, so I think, you know, just that reasonableness, um, because it, it's expensive. You know, when you equate this to a sidewalk value. Sidewalks are incredibly expensive now. I mean, you're talking thousands and thousands of dollars. I think Sarah's was, um, I think four or five thousand dollars. You know, that she had to come up with that. And that's a real impact for someone who's trying to build their own home and, you know, they're doing it maybe on a cash basis. And we're asking them to go write us a check for four or five thousand dollars for us to hold it, you know, like it's, it doesn't, it's not a feel good moment. Either for the city. So I think, you know, leveraging the, these opportunities and working with, you know, community members to make greater improvements to their neighborhoods is, you know, a much better route for the city to take.
So I know that we're coming up on a deadline for one of our commissioners. Um, are we allowed to continue discussion without a form?
Yeah, I don't.
Yeah.
I don't think it's super advisable.
It seems a little funky.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay.
Well, this isn't, you guys are actually can take action and stuff. Our other commissions don't really. Um, usually they'll have like an ad hoc or something, but they're just kind of brainstorming, but you guys are a little bit more of an authoritative commission.
So I would tend to agree without knowing for sure. I think we should play it on the safe side.
Definitely.
Um, and I, I would suggest that we uh just continue this item.
Yeah, I don't think there's really a hurry. Um, but we definitely want to move this along. We have, we do have, you know, we have another applicant. We worked with Sarah. We can apply this kind of same process to the applicant that we currently have. We've been working with them already. Um, they're in another really precarious drainage situation that, um, you know, potentially has impacts to multiple properties. So, um, you know, their. LID feature that we've been working with will also be very um helpful to the city and neighboring properties. So it's a real win-win. Um, but I think it's something that, you know, we should continue to move down this pathway. And maybe we could look at some additional options, you know, we really hadn't looked at much more than LID features. But I think as the commission sees the opportunity to, you know, be a little bit more forward thinking, that could be something we look into as well.
Have a menu of options and you can use the funding for that property, you know.
Yep.
In the vicinity of that property.
So.
Great.
All right, so. I guess, yeah, I mean, do we need a motion to continue this?
Do we need to pull it? Do we already need to pull it coming?
Uh, go ahead, Julie.
Understand time restraints, but could we from our commission, please ask staff, and since we have. Two delegates from SHN that within your packet material that is always sent out at the last minute. That we could please have these reports and then um the public wouldn't feel like, and you as well, you have to wait another month too. You shouldn't have information and preview the stuff that we don't. Um, so please be advocates for transparency commission and ask for these reports to be in the packet. The only packet material this evening was the minutes from me. Thank you.
Thanks, Julie.
It's all scanned. You guys had a full packet with all.
Yep, yep, we have it all. All right, so. Do I, do we need to continue this or just, or do we need a motion to continue it or we can just continue it, right?
Just added to your agenda items.
So does it get added as a future discussion item?
Yeah.
That's true.
Yep.
Yeah, because we're still having a discussion.
Right.
We have a thing. There's no structure action. I don't know if there was some other options. Let's talk about this further.
Okay. So having said that, um, I think we're going to forego the remaining um. Two items and um looking for a motion of adjournment.
Motion to adjourn.
Do I have a second?
Yep, my second.
All right.
Eight oh six.
At eight oh six, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi. We are adjourned.